Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. The board clerk will certify the board.
Mrs. Hammond?
I certify.
Mrs. Seeger?
I certify.
Mrs. Bundy?
I certify.
Mr. Whitaker?
I certify.
I certify.
The clerk of the board will now do a roll call.
Mrs. Hammond?
Present.
Mrs. Seeger?
Here.
Mrs. Bundy?
Here.
Mr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mr. Wynn?
Here.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. You may be seated. May I get a motion on closed session agenda items?
Our motion to accept the personal agenda as amended regarding two resignations/terminations, three appointments, one athletic/ coaches stipend, and one transfer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one nay. Ms. Seeger.
Ms. Seeger.
Discussion item A, donation to the Essex County Public Schools Music Department from the Chesapeake Corral by Dr. Cheryl Davis. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Thomas. School board members, Mrs. Hammond, Mrs. Saunders, it's a pleasure to be here. I too am a school board member.
Member for Nephilim County, but that's not why I'm here tonight. As you well know, the Chesapeake Corral has been donating to Essex County and all many of the counties in the northern neck. And the last time I was here, it was because one person from your county was a member. And because we always know that one person can make a difference, all three of your schools will be getting a very small donation from the Chesapeake Corral to help with the music program. We are not in session in terms of music for the Chesapeake Corral for this year, so I don't know whether or not, you know, we'll have money for you next year. But we certainly hope this will help. I don't know who to give it to, but I'll give it to you.
Thank you so much. It's very good. We appreciate it, and we certainly appreciate such a commitment.
I know this is a hard time for all of you, especially musicians, so good luck to you. We've got a lot of decisions to make. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. We appreciate your contribution.
Discussion item B, profile of a graduate.
Dr. Temple will provide the board with a brief overview of the profile of a graduate work.
Good evening. Before you, you have a summary of the items that are the current plans in place for Tappahannock Elementary, Essex Intermediate, and Essex High School this month. November is National Career Development Month, so all of our schools have focused on that initiative. I know you've had a chance to look over it. Do you have any questions or statements?
Was this past year the first year that we rolled over all the data information? I know that they're putting stuff in the computer and it kind of follows the student. Was this past year the first year that that happened?
This past year, yes.
Okay, and unfortunately, we also were shut down.
Yes, exactly.
Did it, did it work the way that we planned?
They're still working on the academic and career plans. The guidance counselors are still working on those, but they are getting the information in. And if you look at some of the items that they're going to be doing in the month of November, those, that information will be added into it.
Awesome. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say that I think it's really nice to see that, you know, we're working with the profile of the graduates updates for the, like, the Tappahannock Elementary School, and actually also the middle school, because, you know, it just encourages our students, scholars, to, you know, plan for their careers.
That's correct. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Discussion item C, the strategic plan?
That is correct. The strategic plan, what we have provided tonight is a calendar of the upcoming items that will be presented at the school board meetings for the rest, for the remainder of the school year. We just wanted to give you an idea of what will be coming forth. So it's just a monthly overview of what you will receive.
Any questions or comments from the board?
So from year to year, do you think you might be presenting the same sort of data, or is it just going to be flexible according to what?
It will be flexible according to what the strategic plan is and what our needs are in a particular time period, so it may change some. But this is our intent, is to try to stay close to this as we continue to work on the strategic plan, which is driven by the goals that you have established as a school board. So as long as those kind of stay the same, we're going to stay within the same realm of it.
The instruction department, is that the part where we find about SOLs?
That is correct.
Okay. Although it's not a factor?
Yes. So in November, we'll do an update for you of the strategic plan and where we're at currently. And then next year, we'll work on getting that revised for you, but this is our intent for the moment.
Just to give the board an update, the Code of Virginia requires that a strategic plan be, a progress report is provided by the board on even years. And so, as Dr. Temple indicated, we'll provide you with an update of various data points in line with the schedule. On the odd years, we will provide you with an entirely revised strategic plan. That strategic plan will follow the same template as the school improvement plans, the goals and objectives and the like. So in the fall of this coming year, you will receive an entirely new plan. Hopefully, at that time, we will have more academic type data points to provide for you. So, Dr. Temple, just wanted to give you a schedule of what you can anticipate as far as reporting data points. And otherwise, there's ongoing work with the schools to develop their plans to get them up to speed.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you. Discussion item D, the graduation requirements. Good evening.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Thomas. Excuse me. What you have before you are several packets related to graduation requirements. And one packet is related to standard, the standard diploma. Another is related to the advanced diploma. And what you need to pay attention to is that, at the beginning of each of those packets, it talks about the requirements for students entering the ninth grade for the first time in 2018, 19, and beyond. So those will actually be next year's seniors. The students who are this year's seniors are the last ones to go through the old requirements. Now, my presentation segues well with Dr. Temple's, because there's another colorful little packet here about, or one sheet about the profile of a graduate. And I don't know if you remember, when I was talking about profile of a graduate last year, I talked about the fact that people had finally realized that some students were going to go vocational track, some were going to go into the military, not everybody was college-bound. And so the state finally started to recognize that and wanted to provide some other options. So that's why we ended up with the profile of a graduate. And so what happened ultimately was that the number of verified credits that are needed is lessened. And those are the credits that they get when they both pass the class and pass the SOL. And the high school counselors keep very close track of this, so that students are on course as we move throughout the year. Do you have any questions?
I, I have one, but I'm afraid that I'm going beyond the scope of what you're presenting. I think that I'll wait.
Okay. If you want to email me, or?
I, I will. It really has to do with, we've kind of had a, a plan in the past to try to move our students, students who were struggling and maybe had not passed SOLs. And I'm concerned about how this COVID shutdown has impacted those students. And I know that, and, and how is, and I guess this does pertain to yours, but how has COVID impacted the required verified credits?
Well, that's, that's a good question. One of the things that happened last year was that there were actually emergency guidelines for the awarding of locally awarded verified credits. So the high school convened a committee that actually worked on that and some students who were, who needed to graduate. They collect all the data, and they gave those locally awarded verified credits. In terms of this year, you know, obviously, there are lots of concerns about the loss due to COVID. And the high school is starting to work on looking at remediation plans, which, you know, normally, by this, probably a little bit later in the year, teachers would have been keeping students after for tutoring. This year, it actually will be starting much sooner, because, I don't know if you realize, but there will be SOL tests starting this, this semester, in October, actually, the eighth grade writing test. And so, you know, they're starting to, to look at that. But, you know, in, in terms of the actual loss, I don't think that anybody, anywhere knows that. I mean, the schools have started to give some diagnostic tests, but I don't know that they can pinpoint anything specifically right now.
Thank you. Discussion item E, the architectural design for the EHS concession stand.
On the 27th of August, we had a, held an athletic improvement and renovation committee meeting. At that time, the members of that committee received a narrative that indicated there were, the renovations, the changes in terms of the dimensions of the renovations to be completed. That narrative was provided to RRM, architects. Members of that group came out, met with myself, the maintenance director, and the principal. We walked the facility, shared the narrative with them, and then in turn, they provided this sketch. I presented the sketch to members of the athletic committee, and they issued me a few questions that I have answered. There was a question about the arrangement of the bathrooms, but that comes straight out of the narrative. There was a question about whether we had a cost estimate for this. The cost estimate is $125,000. I provided that information to the county administrator. I reiterated that to Mrs. Lenz, who was helping out with the athletic committee. There were additional questions about the RFP, RFP process. If the, if the board desires to go forward, we will enlist the help of the attorneys and put this out for an RFP. I've gotten a verbal authorization from the county administrator regarding the cost estimate forward. It'll take the attorneys roughly, I'd say about five business days to turn around an RFP. The RFP will need to be out for 15 days. And then we will, we'll receive bids, and we'll have a, a group to evaluate, study, and grade the bids, and then return to the board and provide you with that information. There was a question regarding access to the bathrooms by one of the members of our As you can recall, there have been various iterations of this sketch kind of floating around. And the copy that Mr. Chen's provided to my attention today details the bathrooms being access through a hallway midway through the building. The architectural design details access to the facility at the rear. I'm going to bring that to the attention of the architect, and we'll look at that more closely to see which design feature would allow for the access of traffic into the restrooms, given the layout of the property. Any questions?
Is there a way to get a copy? I couldn't get my printer here. I don't know how to do that, make a smaller sort of print.
Sure, you want a, a paper copy?
You can, you can have, you can have mine.
Okay, I can get a letter. Yeah, yeah, because I looked at it, and I said, oh, this is cool. And I tried to print. I couldn't get it all printed.
So the purpose of, of sharing the document with members of the committee was to look for discrepancies. I believe I answered all the questions that Mrs. Lenz identified relative to the committee members. There were no specific technical questions, other than the, the, the question that Mr. Chen's indicated. And as I said, I'll, I'll contact the architects about that.
So this is on tonight's agenda as a discussion item. Does this need to get approved by the board at the next meeting? Or will you put it out for an RFP first?
It's the.
Because it's already part of our CIP.
That's correct. I would like to move forward with this, with the pleasure of the board. We can certainly bring it back. That would just, you know, delay things just a bit.
So it's already, we've already voted on this project as part of our CIP. We asked the superintendent to get the architectural design. It has gone through the committee and several sites, so if nobody has any objection, if you think of something that you have questions about, you can email Dr. Thomas. But the board has already approved this project, so it won't come back before us until after he gets his RFPs done.
Is there a cost difference between it being, being the entryway to the bathrooms being in the back or in the middle hallway?
There could very well be a cost difference. We gave the estimate to the architects. So as long as, I haven't signed off on this yet, so once I sign off on it and we make changes, and that's a change order fee that we'd have to deal with for sure. But at this time, no, we've agreed to a price for the drawings. And so as long as we get this done prior to any type of groundbreaking type work, then there won't be an additional fee.
I mean, I don't have any objections to the project. I was just wondering if there was a cost differential.
If, if there's a, a substantial cost difference, I can make you aware of that. Right now, the project, I've informed Mr. Lombardo of $125,000.
Are, are we going to have an opportunity to see the new drawing with the middle hallway? Or?
You, you certainly can. Mr. Wynn, the other members of the committee, Mr. Chen brought this change to my attention, as I indicated to you. I have not been able to see in the drawings, I mean, in the narrative, the indication in this regard. If you give me a second, I can look back through it if you want. I, the board members have provided that narrative to you all as well. So that, so you all have seen the narrative relative to the drawing, and so have the members of the committee.
Mr. Chen, did you have something to add to that, or something else to?
Can you write, uh, like, how many?
No, please do. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wynn, I have a copy that the committee drew up, or had drawn up, for the restroom and concession stand, which I gave to Dr. Thomas. I also have a copy of what the architect proposed, if you or anyone else would like to see.
Yes, I, I mean, you don't have to show it to me right now.
Uh, give it to me.
I'll take a copy.
Uh, Ms. Seeger, regardless of where the entrances are for the restrooms, the, I, I, I'm just guessing that the cost. I don't think that regardless of where the entrances were placed, there would be a significant difference in construction costs. The reason the committee put an outside door on the current building with an eight-foot hallway and entrances to the restrooms off of that hallway, number one, was weather concerns. If people enter the building from outside and you have inclement weather, they're going to be standing out there waiting to go to the restrooms. If the entrances to the restrooms are within the building, then they're going to be protected from weather concerns.
And I would assume that our high school administration has had some feedback on this, because?
They, they, I've shared it with Mr. Barfield. He did the walkthrough of the facility. I was present. What I recall him raising were, were concerns of the section designated for wrestling. I know he was concerned about that size, the layout, as it, as the narrative called for. So he expressed that concern. That could very well be the reason why they made the adjustment in question, so.
The, the concern that I could foresee with the entrances to the bathroom being on the backside is supervision.
Sure, yep, that's, that's a valid concern, too.
So, and, because where you had the hallway going in was on the same side as the concessions, right? So our, our, our staff who was supervising our students during that time can watch the concession and the in and out of the bathrooms all at the same time. If they're on the backside, now you've got students around behind the building.
Sure.
And not, not visible from somebody who's watching concessions.
Right, that's a valid concern.
If, if the vaults are on the backside, there is a five-foot-high fence protecting the athletic field there.
Right.
Between the fence and that building is seven feet, I imagine.
Okay.
But it's bare ground. You have to put, to my way of thinking, a concrete pad back there for people to stay out of the mud. As far as the wrestling area, that will not change in size regardless of how the concession stand and restrooms are presently configured. That will remain the same, and it has proved to be adequate for X number of years.
Okay. And, and like I said, I, I just wanted to raise the issue. We certainly, that's way down below our.
Yep, that's why, that's why, you know, we're bringing it up, so you can have feedback. Mrs. Lenz, do you have a comment you want to make?
Mrs. Hammond, in response to your question, the high school principal, the high school associate principal, and the athletic director are on our committee. So when I sent out all of these documents, they were included in that communication.
Thank you so much.
Trying to be as inclusive in communication as possible.
I just didn't want to step on their toes, but it just made sense to me to, to be concerned about supervision. All right, any other questions on the concession stand? Then we'll hear back from Dr. Thomas and/or Bud at, after the RFP?
Yep.
Okay.
We can do that.
Action, I mean, information item F, the year mapping of the board agenda items?
So in keeping with the board's request in terms of notifications, timely notifications regarding content for board meetings, Mrs. Saunders and I had a discussion about mapping out the year of agenda items that we can anticipate having, so as, so as to give staff ample notice to ensure timely submission of documents for posting on board docs. So essentially, this is just a map to be able to say to staff, regardless of the issue here, you have a year-long calendar, so that you have a clearer sense as to documents and items that should appear on the board's agenda throughout the year.
And can we merge the strategic plan calendar with this one?
Yeah, I, I think that's what Dr. Temple alluded to, we're trying to do as well. We're in the process, yeah, so we're, we're trying to work through basically being able to add certain benchmarks or certain data points relative to, to the plan to that schedule. Yeah, so we're going to merge the two.
It's actually already in there where you see data, data points that we just weren't, we didn't specify what it would be. We just set aside.
So data point was referring specifically to the strategic plan. All right, thank you.
But we just said it would be presented.
November also says strategic. Right. I just, I, I was looking for those specific topics. Thank you.
The main thing, generally, during a normal school year, we would, after the SOL administration, then we would provide the board with an update on those unadjusted scores in around the August time period. And then present that in August, and then present our changes in the goals and objectives relative to those data points. Then have an opportunity for public session in September, and then have you all approve the strategic plan, the new strategic plan, for the odd year. So that's where we're going to get to. We're building this. So that's the direction we're going.
So I'm, I'm jumping back, Dr. Temple, to the strategic monthly presentation, and I note that in February, it's one of those instruction departments. Will we receive a report at that time on the SOLs that are taken at the end of the first semester?
Yes, we should have that.
Because half of our SOLs will be done at that point.
Yes, we, yes, we will have that information available.
All right.
Yes, we should have it.
Any other questions or comments from our board? If, if you would please take this and look over it, with the exception of Mr. Wynn, we've all gone through multiple years now, kind of peruse it and make sure that there's not something that you're used to seeing each year that isn't on here, or something that appears to be out of a timeframe. But I've looked at it, Dr. Thomas has gone over it with Sharon, and hopefully, we haven't overlooked too much. But it does give us that ability to foresee what we've got and to not wind up with one of those nights where 16 things end up on the agenda, and then the next month, nothing's on the agenda. Helps to spread it out. Okay, and if there's no other questions or comments on that, we'll move to information, discussion item G, which is the VSBA policy updates. A number of policy updates, seems like some of them have just been before us, but VSBA continues to update. And for the most part, there are very few changes to the policies themselves. They're almost all either cross-reference changes or changes to references of the code. The few that say policy change, when I looked through them, they were minute changes. They didn't impact the policy itself, it was the wording in the policy. But were there any that anybody looked at that they had questions or concerns about?
I just had one, and I should have asked it last time, the compliance officer. Who's that? Is that the superintendent or something like that?
Our compliance officer is?
The compliance officer, that is Dr. Temple. Where?
The compliance officer is Ms. Gross, and then I am her alternate compliance officer.
Ms. Gross, that's correct. Ms. Gross.
Ms. Gross, and then I'm the alternate.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you make sure that you've looked over all those and everything, any questions, send them to me, and I can run them through VSBA before the business meeting this will be voted on at our next meeting.
Dr. Temple, is that in the central office handbook, that designation compliance officer for Ms. Gross?
And it's also in the student code of conduct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And it's on the website also, I believe.
I think it is, yes.
Before we close the meeting, I just want to remind the public that there is a petition that has been brought before the board for a name change for Essex Intermediate School, and there is a survey on the website. If you're having difficulty finding that, call the school board. Where it was seemed to have moved when I went on there today, but.
I'd have to talk.
But it is there still.
I'd have to talk to Brad. There's a process whereby things are bumped down that we might have to recycle back.
Well, tomorrow would be the end of the two weeks. So, so that's the reason I wanted to remind everybody that if they, if they have not done the survey and they wish to take that, that the survey will be taken down. done the survey and they wish to take that, that the survey will be taken down. It was put up sometime on the Tuesday following our meeting, but we'll leave there to the end of the day tomorrow. And then it will no longer be available on Wednesday. That way, that can all be tallied and everything, and the next step in that policy says that Dr. Thomas and I will be working on a committee.
So you were supposed to provide names if you haven't given those names to, to Mrs. Hannah?
Yeah, I've gotten those. And then the other thing I wanted to remind everyone is that on Wednesday night, we'll be doing a virtual joint meeting with the board of supervisors. And you've been sent a, an email with the link for a Google Meet. And so if you have any questions about that, please contact Sharon, and she'll put you in contact with whichever tech person is overseeing that.
Will there be an agenda for that meeting?
I have not, I talked with John Regruder briefly, but we did not develop an actual agenda, so I will call him tomorrow to see. But, but my plan was to, the superintendent has some data that he would like to present. And the purpose of that is to begin our discussion. So we, I'm going to ask for some very specific feedback from the board of supervisors of what they're looking for. Not that they can direct our budget, because it's our budget, and we are guided by the Code of Virginia as to what we have to put in that budget. But we do want to hear some feedback from them, so that we're not presenting that budget and then being told, oh, well, we've known from the beginning that we wanted X, Y, and Z. So if we can get some of those desires of the board of supervisors up front, it will help us, guide us as we're working through this process.
I do have a presentation that, that I intend to share. I'd like to give the, some data points on the progress that we're doing. For example, at the prior, at the end of last year, just prior to the COVID, how our enrollment increased roughly 70 students over to the prior year, how we have reduced attrition to roughly 20%. There are bills in the General Assembly pertaining to loss of funding due to ADM. Like to share that. I've received requests for budget items from all of our buildings. We've got some capital improvement requests that I'd like to share with them. Both capital improvement requests that will be in the plan and capital projects, less than $50,000 that we'll have to undertake. Following the concession stand renovation, we'd like to undertake the work on the track. We're anticipating that to be a pretty substantial cost estimate, north of $200,000 or so. So just as we did last year, I'll give you all, you will be able to see the requests that the schools have presented and then the very, and the departments also.
Then I'm going to also make a statement on behalf of the board, and I will send that out to you all tomorrow, so that you can take a look at it and make any comments or changes if you wish. All right. Anybody else have anything before we call for close of the meeting? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
May I, Chair, I'm going to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.